Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM. Thank you all for being here. I'm Second Word Alderman Scott Naumann and Mayor Pro Tem, and I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting as Mayor Gallagher is out of town this week, enjoying some well-deserved time off. We didn't have a Committee of the Whole Meeting last night as we elected to give the staff the evening off, so we'll hold it now just prior to our regular City Council meeting. We have an operational item to discuss. Items to appear, number six, which is the CIP project list. And council received a presentation, of course, on December 6th. And Jason Schatt is here, our Finance Director. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as you said, two weeks ago, staff presented a preliminary CIP Capital Improvement Plan to council for their review. And tonight, we are asking for your overall approval of the CIP plan in its largest pieces so that we might proceed with the bonding and the bond sale that's necessary to finance that plan. Your approval tonight is not necessarily an approval of each individual project. Those will be brought to you for approval as they come up in the plan. And there will be time between now and the adoption of the budget for further discussion of the finer details. Your approval tonight will allow us to get bond counsel and our financial advisers working on the bond sale, which we have scheduled for March 1st of 2022. And I can go through each component of the planned bond sale. As you know, 10 million of the bond sale would be for those essential improvement projects, infrastructure projects, streets, things of that nature. There's $3 million additional for an extension of Forest Grove Drive, $500,000 for the replacement of a fire truck, $700,000 in general corporate purpose bonds for non-essential projects at Palmer Hills, and then our planned $2.5 million bond issuance for essential improvements to the sanitary sewer system. One caveat is, we've done some revenue borrowing in the sanitary sewer fund of late. This time around, we're going to go for the interest rate advantages of geo-bonding in sanitary sewer. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
Council members? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to leave this item on our council agenda as item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, that will remain as operational agenda item number six. Let's move on to our consent agenda items. We have two items to talk about tonight. Consent Agenda C, which is participation in the National Opioid Settlement Agreements. And we have Counselor Curran here to tell us about that item.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent C, we have a resolution that really would authorize the entering of three agreements all relating to the National Opioid Settlement between states and local governments against three distributors of opioids and one manufacturer. It's a $26 billion settlement with about $23.5 billion to be distributed after fees and attorney's fees and all those other sorts of issues that go along with the class action. There were, sort of the, I guess the background of it is that there were 4,000 or more lawsuits that were filed against these distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson as the one manufacturer. And the states and local governments are now in a position of settling this class action. What the, what these agreements do is basically say that we want to participate in that and that the city would be one of the releasing parties, one of the settling parties. We kind of need a, in order to, for the defendants to want to move forward, they need a, what they call a critical mass of the participants to participate. So if we, I guess, I guess to back up, we have the, we have the states that, let me, so, I'm really, I'm sorry. So in order to...
So you want me to jump in?
No, no, I, no. So I think it's really the, the several, the, yeah, one, oh, she stepped in.
Okay, so we've received correspondence from the League of Cities through the Attorney General's Office. The AG's offices across the country have initiated this to ask if any of the cities inside the jurisdictions of the state would like to participate in the settlement agreements. If we don't participate in the settlement agreements, then obviously, we would never see any potential monies. And it's not guaranteed that we would see any of these monies in the first place, but we definitely can't see them if we're not participants in the settlement agreement. So through the Attorney General's Office, they've asked us to have a series of agreements by which we come into the class action. And if there is settlements reached, then they'll determine by virtue of the number of participants in, what those settlements will be, and we would be a participant or a recipient of some of those. There may be restrictions on what the monies could be used for by virtue of the settlement agreement, but it's our thought that we can't possibly, if we don't engage and be part of the settlement agreement, then we can't participate at all, and we think it's better that we do that.
And I don't know why this flustered me so much because it really is one of those things that really, I think, is a no-brainer. It's a problem that affects every community. It's one that affects our community. The monies that would come to the state would then be distributed 50% to the state, whatever dollar amount comes to the state. We'd go 50% to the state, 50% to the local governments. It would be directly to the counties. The counties would then distribute it to the cities. The core functions, the treatment, the Naxalone-related issues, it would be determined by the, you know, by the affected communities on how to best use it within the confines of the settlement. There are the three agreements that I mentioned, the two with the settlement agreement with the distributors, the settlement agreement with the manufacturer, and then an agreement with the state of Iowa to determine how to best distribute it all. But it is a, I think, a good thing for all communities that are affected by this.
Council members, anyone have a question? Alderman Sacks, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my question is, if the money comes to the county, who gets it in the county? The Board of Supervisors? And do they determine how it's divvied up then?
The county does have it on their agenda tonight to participate. And it would go to, it would be up to the Board of Supervisors to work with the cities in that county on how to best use it within, again, the confines of the settlement, which really does pretty specifically set forth how to use it. Treatment affected pregnant women, affected babies that are maybe addicted when they're born. So it's one of those things that it goes to the counties for distribution, but it's, it's, it's pretty well set forth how it would be used.
Thank you.
Others? Alderman Connors.
So what was the initial settlement for, how many billion?
2026.
26 billion? And there's 23 million.
Billion.
Billion. Okay, so it's 23 billion.
Billion, correct.
All right. All right, thank you.
Others?
Relatively small when you split it up in between 50 states divided by municipalities, but still.
So I'd entertain a motion to leave this as Consent Item C. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, so that will remain as Item C. And our next consent agenda item is Item I regarding a resolution of commitment to support the city's application for an EDA grant for the construction of a pedestrian bridge at Middle Road and I-80, which is very exciting. And we have Economic Development Director Jeff Rider here.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of Council. I think this is a little bit more positive news, and I'm happy to talk about it with you this evening and recommend and request why we should maybe participate in this. So tonight, I present to you a resolution of commitment to support the city's application for an EDA grant for the construction of a pedestrian bridge over Middle Road and I-80. Recently, staff was made aware of the fact that one-time monies at the federal level were allocated to the Economic Development Administration for the purpose of supporting travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation. These monies are required to be spent by public sector agencies such as the City of Bettendorf for the purpose of constructing infrastructure to assist with revitalization of local economies that have been affected by things like COVID-19, the deratio, other natural disasters. We feel we fall right in line with some of those parameters. With the construction of the TBK Bank Sports Complex and it being a leading anchor at I-80 and Middle Road, staff felt it to be a great foundation for making this grant application for the pedestrian crossing over Middle. This notion was galvanized by the impending expansion and widening of Forest Grove Road and Middle Road in 2022. As you can see on the screen here, Lauren, if you could assist me with this.
Got it.
Thank you very much. As you can see on the screen here, this is on forestgrovedrive.com. Construction will occur in 2022 for at least three of the roundabouts, potentially a fourth, and the expansion and widening of Middle Road and Forest Grove. One other variable that played into our decision to make this application was the notion of new gateway signage in Bettendorf. As you may recall, a lot of our monument signs that welcome people to our community were really hit hard by the deratio. Today, many of them are held together by popsicle sticks, if you will, and there needs to be some new life bred into there. So what better opportunity than to create a pedestrian bridge that faces Middle Road with some gateway features on it that suggests that Bettendorf's brand is strong and this is a welcoming area as you come in off of I-80? So we're going to really do our best to brand this to be Bettendorf's Gateway Sign in addition to a pedestrian-friendly crossing over Middle Road. Staff is prepared to submit an EDA grant application at this time to construct the pedestrian bridge, but in order to do so, a resolution of commitment to the project is required by council. If successful, roughly $3 million would be secured by EDA, and the city would need to assist with the construction of connectors to the impending trail system that would move people along Middle and Forest Grove Roads. These are things that we've contemplated as part of the expansion project at Forest Grove and Middle. So our commitment to that would be, I guess you could say embellishments upon what we've already contemplated. So I'm going to show you a little bit of a concept here of the bridge that we are suggesting, and then I'll take any questions. But I think it's important to note as well, Brent, Morlock, and Jason and I worked very closely with Baker Tilly on the application. And HDR, the engineering firm for Forest Grove and Middle, really put together some great documents for the design engineering and the cost assumptions for this project. And we really think we have a home run application here. So what I want to show you really quickly is some concept renderings of this bridge. And first off, I want to take you back to kind of a place in life. Forestgrovedrive.com was the website that HDR created to keep people updated on the Forest Grove project. Conceptually, they rendered a pedestrian bridge for us because we asked them to take a look at that. You know, while it served the purpose as a nice concept, when these monies became available, we thought it was time to really put some meat on the bone and start looking at what it could really truly look like. So we have worked with HDR to provide EDA the following concept renderings. What you see here is what's considered a butterfly arch. The identity of the arch spans is blue, similar to the Bettendorf branding and logo. Another rendering of this where you see it coming in to Bettendorf from the north. And as you can see on this rendering here, there's a lot of the fencing and areas where we're going to add our branding and identity elements. Councilmember Baden called me on that the other day, just to make sure. These are only concept renderings at this point, but I think it gives a good framework for where we're headed. And when we get to that point of actually doing the design and the construction, there will be a significant amount of branded elements for Bettendorf as part of this. And then I will show you one more. So this is an aerial perspective, if you will. So if you're looking at this, this would be the side facing Interstate 80, if you can follow my arrow, where the looparounds, because of ADA accessibility, have to be so elaborate, if you will, would walk people down and towards the south, towards Forest Grove and Middle. We're super excited about the application, and the thing that kind of provided even more credibility to this was we received letters of support for our application from the Pleasant Valley School District, Visit Quad Cities, the Quad Cities Chamber, Focus Development, the TBK Bank Sports Complex. And we received a letter of concurrence from the Bay State Regional Commission. The letter of concurrence is a very important document. And when we spoke to EDA, one thing that they certainly notified us really quickly was, does your area, does your community have an MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization? And do you have a SEDS report? A SEDS report is a comprehensive economic development strategy that Bay State Regional Commission facilitates every year. We have those documents. They're updated annually. Many communities that apply for federal funding do not have these documents in tow. And it really provided a strong foundation with EDA to say that your grant application is on good legs. So we received a letter of concurrence to say that, yes, this project supports economic development and growth. This project is going to be a catalyst for our community, and it falls specifically in line with our SEDS report that we issue every year as a Bay State Regional Commission. So really quickly, why did we arrive at this concept and kind of deviate from that rendering that was on the website? The obvious choice was the arch span. It's similar in scope to our I-74 Bridge Project. We chose a butterfly arch instead of a basket handle just to have a little bit of variation. But the other very important piece that we felt about this, and Brent really confirmed this with HDR, is the height of this. With new development coming and continued growth in that corridor, we wanted something that was going to be impactful. And this singular arch span is going to be just that. It's going to be very substantial, and it's going to rise above the horizon as you drive along Interstate 80. Those other concepts that we had, very, very much at grade, and they did not have a lot of height or vertical aesthetics to them. So we arrived on this for the obvious reason. We arrived on the blue as a concept because it works with our branding. And we arrived on the arch span because of its height and its impact it's going to have on the region. And again, in closing really quick, I just want to thank Brent and Jason for their work on this. We've been working with Baker Tilly and HDR for about eight weeks. We've been going back and forth with our regional representative at EDA. And again, we feel we have a real home run of a project here and one that they're going to have a very good time reviewing and hopefully approving. So with that, Your Honor, I would entertain any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Council members, you have any questions for Jeff? Alderman Adamson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The span, is this, are the roads two-lane each way?
So the bridge itself is a pedestrian bridge?
Right, I'm talking underneath.
Oh, underneath?
Yeah, is that two-lane each way? Is that a four, is that a four-lane with the centerpiece?
Yes, I believe that's two lanes. Brian, can you?
This is just a conceptual drawing. Eventually, we do see that corridor developing into two lanes as it comes off of Interstate 80. But right now, this is conceptual. And eventually, that's what we're going to be asking for when we look at the eventual reconstruction of the I-80 Middle Road Bridge, is to include two lanes.
So the, I guess my question is, the span's going to be wide enough?
Yeah, oh, yes.
And the rec trail and the...
Yes, HDR did a great job of accommodating the right-of-way needs and making sure that the span was wide enough. And just for perspective as well on this aerial, as you see here, this is Quick Star. As you head to the north, this pedestrian bridge is going to be roughly at the point where this current phase of the Middle Road and Forest Grove expansion kind of tapers off. So it's going to be roughly right here with the tight diamond interchange designed and hopefully reconstructed here, and then Interstate 80, as you can see, just immediately to the north. So we really think it's going to have an impact. It's going to be well-lit, a lot of LED features on it, and pretty impactful, so. And the bridge itself, to kind of elaborate on your question, this is going to be a functional bridge as well, so service vehicles can move back and forth, whether it's a John Deere Gator or something along those lines. It will be wide enough to accommodate both pedestrians and a vehicle, a service vehicle, at the same time.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Others? Alderman Sacks, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. So do we already have the right-of-way necessary for that bridge?
We have already spoken with the TBK Bank Sports Complex and their developer. They're willing to grant that right-of-way on the west side. And we anticipate any development on the east side. When that occurs, we're going to make it a requirement if we do a development agreement to provide that right-of-way as well. We don't see any real issues with that, Councilmember Sacks. We think that the parties involved are very obliging.
Thank you.
Others? Jeff, that's a great presentation. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to leave that on our consent agenda as Item I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will remain on consent agenda as Item I. Moving on to the remaining items on our consent agenda. Any questions or concerns regarding any remaining items that we've not already talked about? Alderman Sacks, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. What's the deal with our sweeper? I missed the fire. I didn't hear about it.
We tried to do that while you were gone.
Okay, well, that's okay.
So we had a sweeper that caught fire and needs to be replaced, and we did get insurance proceeds. So our driver was not hurt, but it caught fire during the course of operation. It was a total loss, and so we are replacing the sweeper.
Do we know what caused it?
And I know we've had problems.
Heat?
I know we've had problems with sweepers in the past, so this is a good, going to be a good sweeper.
Yeah, the new one that we're buying, Alderman Sacks, is a, what they call an LGEN Regen X sweeper. They've actually taken, we, the sweeper that caught on fire was what they call an LGEN Crosswind Sweeper. So they have taken input from several municipalities who have had issues with sweepers. And there has been several, not several, but there's been quite a few fires nationally with these type, all different types of sweepers due to the fact that leaves and sticks and everything get caught up in there. So they have totally redesigned this particular sweeper. And we currently have one of these sweepers on order that we're supposed to get here in May. This sweeper is going to be, most likely be nine to 12 months out before we actually receive it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda to remain then, as we've set it for tonight. Is there a motion for that?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take up the consent agenda as written at 7:00 PM. Are there any other items to be added for tonight's agenda by council? I don't have any either, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned until 7:00 PM, and then we'll hold our regular council meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf's City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Time is 7 o'clock. I'm Second Word Alderman and Mayor Pro Tem Scott Naumann. I'll be presiding over tonight's City Council meeting as Mayor Gallagher is out of town all this week, enjoying some well-deserved time off. And with that, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Naumann.
Here.
Sacks.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
Now, with that, thank you, Michelle. Everyone, please remove any hats or headdresses you may have and join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Hope Baptist Church, Pastor Mark Cannon.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mark?
Power heads and prayer. Father, we thank you for the blessings that we've seen on our city this year and how you have guided. And we thank you for these councilmen and our mayor, these that serve our city. And Father, as we commence with the meeting tonight, I pray your hand would be on it. You would guide. Father, I thank you for these first responders that are here tonight. And I pray, Father, that your hand would be on them. Thank you for their service. Thank you, Father, for their dedication to this community. I pray you'd bless the proceedings now, and we pray these things in thy name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor Cannon. So our first opportunity tonight is an award for our fire department and our first responders. And we have Captain Matt Lawson here filling in for Chief Canork, who I believe is joining us by phone via Zoom. But Captain Lawson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I thank everybody for coming out tonight. For those of you guys that don't know, our honors program was developed about 15 years ago. It's given to people for acts of heroism, courage under fire, if they're exemplary service. Over the 15 years, we've given it out probably only about five times or less. So it means a lot to us. And the fact that, you know, these three gentlemen tonight that'll be receiving an award, you'll see just truly how magnificent this is. For those that don't know, fighting a structure fire is a, is a team-oriented collaborative effort. And, you know, everybody's got to do the right thing at the right time for it to work. And on this particular day, the entire team was truly above and beyond. I mean, you know, three guys are getting awards tonight, but everybody was, was above and beyond. I mean, things worked out perfectly. And as, right now, can I get Mike Martin, John Crump, and Brian Moriarty up here, please? So Brian was originally nominated for an award. So it goes through our honors committee, and the committee will review the award. They'll look at it, and they'll decide whether, you know, it's, it would be like a Class 1 Award or Class 2 Award or whether there would be an award at all. And doing that, they look at, they take statements from people. They look at videos that we may have. They talk to police officers, firemen. And through that process, Mike and John were also noticed that what they did was also deserving of an award as well. So Brian is receiving the Distinguished Medal Award, which is, it was our third-highest award. It's given to a member for credible act in line of duty in adverse conditions. And really, what it's saying is, is that he did something that is above what's normal for us. And, you know, our job is obviously dangerous all the time, but when you're in a structure fire. But what he did is, is he took the, not only from previous calls that we were on, but also he took, you know, the experience of his being a paramedic. Not only did he rescue the person, but he also started life safety efforts immediately after removing him. So to give you kind of the story of that, on March 12th, Bettendorf Fire responded to a house fire at 1895 Tam O Shannon Drive. Upon dispatch, the call, heavy smoke was visible from Scruse Hills Fire Station. Upon dispatch, the call, heavy smoke was visible from Scruse Hills Fire Station. So, our personnel knew it was going to be a working fire. And from previous responses, there was potentially two victims inside. The three fire companies from Bettendorf arrived almost simultaneously. They were within seconds of each other. Firefighters Moriarty, Martin, and Crump knew they were going to be the first ones inside and assigned to search and rescue. Firefighter Moriarty performed forcible entry on the front door. They immediately encountered heavy black smoke that was banked down to the floor. They moved quickly up the stairs. They noted heavy fire in the back of the structure. All three firefighters entered the home unprotected from a hose line and had split up to perform the search, knowing that time was of the essence for a favorable outcome if anybody was still inside. Firefighter Moriarty located the victim. Firefighters Crump and Martin assisted removing him or removing her from the structure. Firefighter Moriarty started life-saving medical care and turned her over to the crews outside so he could rejoin firefighters Martin and Crump in completing the primary search for the second victim. Fortunately, the victim, the second person, was out of the structure. But I'd like to present Brian Moriarty with the Distinguished Service Medal. And then firefighter Martin and firefighter Crump. I'm going to get a letter of commendation for your actions. Do you see anyone who would take a quick picture?
Wow, Matt's got this down. Good job, guys.
You got a speech on that? I did want to mention too, I know the chiefs both did want to be here. You know, they did have, Chief Canork did have a death in the family. And then also Chief Sade was unavailable tonight, but I do, I did want to mention that. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, guys.
You're all here. Just on behalf of our entire community, our staff, our Mayor Gallagher, I'm sure he wishes he could be here to congratulate you personally and certainly our council. We can't thank you enough for the work that you do, not every day, the sacrifices you make individually. And then obviously, those of your families, there's really no way we could ever repay that. But we're so grateful, and you give us an intense feeling of confidence that if we need you, that you'll be there. So, thank you, and have a great Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy New Year. And with that, we've now come to public requests of council.
There's a lot getting up.
Lot of people to talk here.
You need exit music. That's right. So, if there's anyone here that would like to be heard on an item that's not already on tonight's agenda, this is the opportunity to be heard. Please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address, and then you may address the council. Seeing no one, we'll close that public request of council and move on to item number six. That's a resolution to approve the CIP project listing and directing staff to proceed with the sale of bonds in support of the 2022 CIP plan. I believe Councilmember Connors has that item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the CIP project listing and directing staff to proceed with the sale of bonds in support of the 2022 CIP plan and economic development projects as presented on December 6th, 2021. I move approval of the resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
All right, thank you. All that passes unanimously. And now we have items seven and eight, which is wards and precincts to be reestablished based on the census. Director Mark Hunt, do you have an explanation of this item?
Sure, if you'll remember, Mayor Pro Tem, that we did have a presentation from Taylor Beswick last minute of the whole. With the new census data being released, we are required to issue ward maps. Those ward maps also contain precincts. There was a delay in the census data. So, we are asking that you let us do this all in one reading tonight so that we can turn this in by the required state deadline of December 28th. Those maps, you'll remember, have three new precincts in every ward. The wards change a little bit, mostly sliding to the east to incorporate into Ward 5, which, where most of population growth was. I can answer any other questions, but the 12/28 deadline is imperative, and that's why we're asking for the one reading on this case.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Hunt? All right, if not, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this item?
No, we did not.
All right, let's go ahead and open that public hearing with regard to the amendment of the city code entitled Wards and Precincts. Anyone here wishes to be heard on that item? All right, seeing no one, let's close that public hearing. And before we move to the ordinance for Councilmember Sexer, it's my understanding that the staff would actually elect to waive the second and third readings of this ordinance due to time constraints and filing. So, City Attorney Curran, would you like to speak to that issue?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think Mark pretty much said it all. We've got a deadline of December 28th that we have. It's really because of the delay in the census, the time constraints are upon us. So, it is important that we just do this in one reading.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to waive the second and third readings of this item.
No movement.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there, do we need to call the roll on that item, right?
You do.
Your preference. All right, let's call the roll on that.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, so waiving the rules, the second and third reading on that. Then I would entertain a motion for Councilmember Sexer. Do you have this, right? This ordinance?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first and final reading of an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 5, Article A of the city code of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, entitled Wards and Precincts to establish ward and precinct boundaries based upon the 2020 United States Census. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Perfect, that passes unanimously. So, we now have established our wards and precinct going forward for the next decade.
Yippee.
All right, item number nine is our third and final reading of an ordinance amending the future land use map. So, that is Councilmember Brown's item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the future land use map for property generally located north and west of 5790 Forest Grove Drive from urban medium intensity to community commercial. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Michelle, please call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Perfect, that's passed unanimously as well. And now we're on to another ordinance, item 10, which is to revoke the existing PUD. That's Councilmember Webster's item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance revoking the existing planned unit development plan and amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map by reverting the zoning district classification A1, Agricultural Urban Reserve District for property generally located northeast of the intersection of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive and south of Interstate 80. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
We have a motion. I think we got a second?
Second.
He was a little quick on that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, Michelle?
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, that also passes unanimously. Now, item number 11 is the third and final of an ordinance rezoning property northeast of the intersection of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive, south of I-80 A1. And that is Councilmember Baden's item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for property generally located northeast of the intersection of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive and south of Interstate 80 A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to C3 General Business District. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this? All right, Michelle, call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Perfect, well done. The last item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And we would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
No movement.
We have a motion and a second. Any item that anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Perfect, that passes unanimously as well. And any council member have anything? Councilmember Adamson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. If I understand this right, Panorama Park, they have their own mayor, they have their own city council, they vote for their own people, but they're just going to use the voting place that 51 uses?
Correct.
That's right.
So, they'll have their own ballot?
It's the same arrangement that's been in place for decades.
Okay.
Yeah, their own ballot, but just efficiency, electoral efficiency.
Sure, okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Webster?
Motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I just want to thank the staff and all of my colleagues. We're just in amazing year. It's been challenging, no doubt about it. But, I mean, it's just phenomenal to see the way this team pulls together and works really, really hard. And I think we've got a lot of uncertainty coming for next year as well. But again, great confidence in this team and just a sincere gratitude for working with all of you. Hope everybody has a great Merry Christmas and again, a Happy New Year. So, I'm sorry, did you have a motion, Councilmember Webster?
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we stand adjourned.